Good morning, County Council. The weather has cooperated. Here we all are, ready to have our special meeting today. At this point in time, as you are able, please join us in the singing and standing for O Canada.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts, we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God, keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call?
Counselor Mackey.
Present.
Counselor McKay. Counselor Carlton.
Present.
Counselor Pringle. Counselor McQueen. Counselor Nielsen. Counselor Patterson. Counselor Dickert.
Present.
You, Counselor Kentner. Counselor Keveney. Counselor Body. Counselor Gregg will be joining us later this morning. Counselor Milne. Counselor DeBreen. Warden Matrasovs. Counselor Boarding Yaw.
Present.
Counselor Echols. Counselor Tom Hutchison sends his regrets today. Alternate Counselor Doug Hutchinson. So we have all members of the tent today with the exception of Counselors Tom Hutchison and Scott Gregg.
Okay, thank you very much. Let us begin, as we acknowledge with respect that we are gathered on the traditional territory of the Inishanabe Nation. The people of the Three Fires, known as the Odawa, Ojibwe, and Potawatomi Nations. We give thanks to the Chipewas of Sogin and the Chipewas of Nauwos, collectively known as the Sogin-Ojibwe Nation. Traditional keepers of these lands and waters since time immemorial. In our south lies the traditional territories of the Six Nations of the Grand River and the Hon Deshone. We are dedicated to honoring Indigenous history and culture and committed to moving forward in the spirit of truth, reconciliation, and friendship with all First Nations, Métis, and Inuit people. At this point in time, as we enter into our budget agenda today, I will ask if there are any declarations of interest. Seeing no hands raised in the chamber or online, we will continue. And we have a number, we have an itinerary today. We are going to be walked through our slides, one through forty-one, at various different points from different leadership from our, our staff. And what we'll do is, yep, please, C A O Scherzer is on his way to the lectern to introduce what we'll be doing. We are going to aim for having our break at eleven-ten, so I'm just saying that right now, so you can all poke me if I forget when we get to eleven-ten. But we do have quite a full agenda, so we're expecting that lunch will be a little later after that, in order to be able to make sure that we visit all of the sections that we need to contemplate. So with that, welcome. Good morning, C A O Scherzer, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Warden Matrasovs. And good morning, Council. So today's staff will present an overview of Gray County's 2026 draft budget and the projected 2027 budget. We will identify the process undertaken to develop this draft budget, and some of the key highlights that reflect our commitments to Council's direction and strategic priorities. The journey to this draft budget has been a collaborative effort. Staff began with multi-year planning, leveraging new budgeting software, and holding a series of meetings with various financial analysts, managers, and directors from earlier this year right through to September. These sessions focused on refining departmental budgets, identifying savings, and prioritizing initiatives. We have had several budget discussions with the Budget and Finance Committee, identifying some of the budget pressures and the F T requests in September, presenting the highlights of the capital budget in October, and presenting the operating budget highlights in November. We will highlight the items of the Budget and Finance Committee that have recommended to Council to explore further, and also identify some further potential budget reduction opportunities based on the direction and discussion from the Budget and Finance Committee. This draft budget is based on the strategic priorities identified in the Corporate Strategic Plan, as well as other strategic guiding documents such as the Asset Management Plan, County Official Plan, and the Economic Development Tourism and Culture Master Plan. The draft budget builds off of the 2026 projected budget that was identified as part of last year's budget process. The draft budget will help the county to continue to advance strategic priorities in a number of areas, including asset management and infrastructure to continue to make our roads, buildings, and infrastructure maintained. Continued investments into housing and community services to support the needs of our most vulnerable residents, aligning with the county's strategic goal of giving everyone a place to call home. Continuing to invest and enhance the services provided by our paramedics to ensure we are meeting the needs of our growing communities and changing demographics. Maintaining and enhancing the exceptional quality of care provided by our long-term care staff, allowing them to continue to color it for the residents. Continue to support for regional marketing. Investment renovation of master plan priorities, including the Gather Campaign and enhanced data access for municipalities. Continue to move forward with going green and gray projects that will not only reduce greenhouse gas emissions, but will result in our buildings, facilities, and fleet being more energy efficient, resulting in future cost savings, as well as ensuring our infrastructure and communities are more resilient to our changing climate. Continued investments and enhancements in our corporate services departments who provide support to County Council, as well as frontline and public-facing services. Funding to support staff and workforce development, including skills development, succession planning, and diversity initiatives, as outlined in our strategic plan. Investments in technology, communications, and process improvements to enhance service quality and efficiency. These are just a few of the highlights in the draft budget, and staff will provide further highlights as they go through their presentations of their budgets today, as well as next week. In response to direction and recent discussions at the Budget and Finance Committee, staff have conducted a detailed review of reserves and surpluses over the past couple of years. We are proposing several budget reduction opportunities which could lower the overall net levy increase, which currently stands from at six-point-six-eight percent to below five-and-a-half percent. These reductions have been carefully considered to minimize impact on service levels and future budgets. So over the next two budget meetings, staff will highlight major assumptions and impacts that have shaped both the 2026 draft budget and the 2027 projected budget. Staff will summarize budget reductions made prior to today, as well as the inclusion of prior-year council initiatives and changes from the prior-year projections and their impact on the overall budget. We'll provide comparisons between the 2025 budget, the 2026 projections, and the current draft budget. Departments will also present the highlights of their operating capital budgets using the PDF version of the draft budget document, which was included in the agenda package. Staff are looking for any recommendations and directions from Council on whether there is comfort in the overall budget numbers based on what you hear today. If not, staff are interested in any thoughts on a preferred overall net levy target, as well as any recommendations on what areas you would suggest staff explore further for any further budget reduction opportunities. This, this way, we can explore those further in detail and bring those back for Council's consideration on the December twelfth meeting. Staff will track and review any suggestions for budget changes. With the opportunity for Council to consider those changes and pass a motion at the end of the budget, 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 budget presentation next week. Let's see how many times we say budget. Any cannot be answered immediately will be followed up over the course of the two budget meetings. Again, we look forward to the feedback and direction as we work together to finalize the budget that supports Gray County's strategic vision and delivers value to our communities. That's my opening remarks. If there's any questions, I will turn it over to Sue, and she will go through the initial presentation.
Okay, well, just put a call out if there are any questions, but I think we're going to need to move on into the next section before those questions start. Not seeing any hands, please continue.
Thank you and through you, Madam Warden. Morning, everyone. I'm happy to be back supporting again with some more budget days. This is a one Christmas present to us all today, so let's enjoy today. So the first slide I have for you today is basically a pictogram of the event that Randy just described on how we got from last year into today. And over the course of a couple of my slides, you will see, we kind of go back in the past and into the future, but, but we started last, last year was the first year we actually had a current year budget and a, and a next year projection. And then in the spring this year, we implemented our budgeting software, so that has allowed us to present the documents you'll see today. Mainly an online version with the PDF capabilities, so I'm, it still needs a bit of work in my eyes, and I think there's a few things I'd like to change going forward, but there's always room for improvements. As Randy said, we've had a lot of meetings over the summer between staff and our financial analysts, managers, directors. We've spent a lot of time discussing how we do things, and can we do them better, and it's led us to today. I'm just going to give you right now an overview of some of the major assumptions that have impacted our budgets this year. One of those is, obviously, we always have, due to the services that we provide, a lot of it is grant-funded from the federal and provincial governments, and a lot of times, we don't know exactly what our base funding could be or will be, so we do make assumptions based on, if we don't know what it is, we're going to assume that it's the same as last year. We also have inflationary increases that impact, not only from a C P I level, but also from the non-residential consumer price index, especially around the services we provide around in our, and there is a slide later on that I've given you, sort of a history of the inflation and our B C I, just to sort of give you an idea of what those numbers are and how they're affecting us. We also have cost of living increases for our non-union and collective agreements. Obviously, if we have current collective agreements, we will know, and in the instances where we have outstanding collective agreements, we do make estimates on what those increases will be over time. Our current benefits rates renew every April first, so we know exactly what the costs are till April first of 2026, and then we are projecting an estimated increase or changes after that. And typically, we discuss with H R and our benefit.
I'm sorry to interrupt. We're just, we just need to do a restart on the materials that people are following along with, with the visuals, so if you want to just take a moment to grab a glass of water and then we'll continue. Sorry, I didn't want to have to interrupt your flow. Okay, we're almost there. Just for people following along, just give us a moment. We're gonna use an alternate electronic conduit to make sure people can access what they need to, to follow along. Okay, so we've got it on the screen. Everybody's got it on their screens. I'm just gonna look to see if we've got a thumbs up from our technology. They've got the cabinet open, so I know I need to wait. Okay, good. We've got the okay. So please, thank you very much. Sorry for that interruption. If you could please continue. Thanks.
Thank you. As I was saying, our benefit rates are known until March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six, and then after that point, we are, have made assumptions based on discussions with our benefit brokers. If we just, next slide, please. Oh, I'm doing. So this slide that you see is just to sort of highlight the impacts that we've seen in inflation and the N R C B A rate, rates over the last few years. As you can see, the third quarter for the non-residential building construction rate was a four-point-two-one increase over the prior period last year, so if I wanted to put that in context to our capital budgets, our overall expenditures in our capital budgets are about a hundred and fifteen million, and if I take out sort of the transfers to reserves, it leaves us about a hundred million, so you add four-point-two percent, it's going to bring you close, it's going to bring you just over four million dollars of an increase if we just do some really rough calculations. On the next slide, we just wanted to highlight what we have included and what's not included in the current budget you see before you. As Randy had mentioned, there were staffing requests that were presented to the Budget and Finance Committee in September that were approved to be included in this year's budget. There are detailed in the front of your budget package online, and in the PDF, you will have a sheet for each staffing request with details on that. And I do have the list on the next slide, and, but that's, we'll do that next. We have included the road exchange. We have included the road exchange impacts that were presented to the urban road and road exchange task force this year. And Rockwood redevelopment is included in the budget with an estimated Q1 2027 opening date. What we haven't included in the budget for you this year is discussions that we've been having between you and the lower tiers on planning efficiencies. And there were recommendations on the November 13th committee of the whole to defer the Aitken paramedic base. That is not included in this budget and neither are recommendations or to bring forward from the November 26, 2025 Budget Finance Committee. The list you see before you were positions that were presented to the Budget Finance Committee in September. These positions are included in this year's budget. They are do have a start date of April 1st, so they do have a delayed start date for 2026. And the 2027 positions that are new also have a delayed start date. I won't go into those in details. I'll let individual departments speak to those more in detail. We do have what I'm calling a service level change with Rockwood redevelopment because it is well underway right now. And we in the 2026 budget, we have assumed that all expenditures that are likely to occur before opening are going to be funded through one-time funding. And we have estimated that cost to be approximately 800,000. And then in the 2027 budget, you will see that we are estimating that the start of the beds and the reopening will be in the first quarter. We are estimating those additional 28 beds will be about 3.16 million in gross expenditures, which is funded through a combination of one-time funding, county level and provincial funding, with an overall net levy increase in 2027 of 452,200. Now, I had mentioned on a previous slide that one of the recommendations was to defer a capital project. And I just thought we'd go over sort of what we did when we do that or defer a project. So when we looked at deferring the Aitken beach, I'm thinking the summertime and maybe I want to be at a beach, but not quite there, the Aitken base, pardon me. And so we sort of look at if we go forward a year, what is the cost of that build going to be if we do it a year from now? Chances are what we thought it would happen in this year is not going to be. It's probably going to cost us some more money. And so we looked at were there other bases that we were already budgeting in that year? So we use that sort of as our baseline. And what that actually does will do if we defer the Aitken base is there will be savings in 2027 of about $8,700 of levy savings. But it will actually cost us more over because now we'll be debenturing more funds over the the cost of the project. And this right now is not incorporated, just as a reminder, into the 2026 budget documents. Randy mentioned that over the course of before we even went to the BFC with our budget, we did as staff sat through and looked at all of our budgets and reduced to about $531,000 or 0.66 of the levy. I'm not going to go into each details on each of these because it's multiple budgets, multiple budget lines. It's it's just a look that everyone did after we sort of got started. So I'm not going to go into detail, but I just wanted you to be aware that we very were looking very closely at some of the budget impacts. A large impact too, in the in the levy drivers that we see are previous council initiatives that we've always included and have been approved to include in the budget. The obvious, the largest one obviously is our asset management plan. It is is about 1.75% of our current levy. So we have a 4.4 million transferred to reserve in this year's budget, which is a $1.4 million increase over prior year. We have the healthcare funding transferred reserve. It decreased slightly based on a recommendation back in the summer from the Budget Finance Committee. So it decreased by $9,500. And we also have our affordable housing reserve, which is 718,900. So if we combine those three numbers together, we get about a 1.82% of our levy is included in those major initiatives. And this slide, so this is just, we're going to go back in time. So this year, last year, this time is what we sort of presented as and was approved for our 2025 budget and our 2026 projected. So we thought last year, based on everything we knew back then, that the levy increase would be about $4.9 million. And of that $4.9 million, these are the major drivers of that number. So we increased the asset management plan by $1.5 million. Transportation increased the machinery transfer for eventual electric fleet and additional vehicles of 134,000. The paramedic service enhancement plan, which has been brought quite a few times to this council, was a $410,000 increase. Housing increased their capital needs for assets and maintenance repairs to buildings of 441,000. There were slight savings in our community transit because rewind back a year, we thought the the funding was going to end at the end of March. So we were budgeting that quarter through onetime funding. So things changed considerably in that area. And our salaries and benefits between our salary grid movements, COLA benefiting pieces, it was about a $2.5 million impact on the levy last year. On this slide, what you'll see is sort of where we are today. So I have the last two columns that you just saw and then today's column. So I you'll see what the 2026 budget is now and what we're projecting for 2027. This slide just takes the information I'm going to quickly, I'm not going to highlight this. This is more for just if you want to see where those levy where the levy impacts are happening, whether it's operating or capital, because it's pretty hard to see on that screen. If I go onto this slide, what you'll see here is so when we were projecting last year, we had an $83.3 million expected levy for this year. Fast forward 12 months to today, we're sitting at an $85.4 million estimate in the levy right now, which is an increase compared to last year of $2.164 million or 2.6 increase. And the main drivers on that $2.1 million are we have included the impact for the roads exchanges of 1.24 million. The staffing request that were presented earlier was 339,700. There are some labor relations changes that counted for about 958,000. We introduced court security this year as so that's impacting the budget by 150,000. And community transit is back in the budget for 145,000. And I increased our estimated supplemental revenue from last year based on I looked as we were looking historically and where some of the surpluses were. I did conclude that our supplemental revenues had been significantly higher than we had budgeted. So I did increase that with the hope of it's going to continue. And we did have some provincial funding changes that we weren't aware of last year. So that gets us pretty close to why we're different from last year. And this slide sort of shows you between our four corporate areas where we're different. We do, we are, we have approximately $1.8 million in our assessment growth this year. And we're the assumption on the 1.756 million assumes that we're still ratcheting down the multi-res ratio by quarter, which this will be the last year. So that's the net combination of those two numbers. And that leads us to that $6.68 million. And right now, 1% change in our residential rate, it is approximately $801,200. If we look at our current projection 2026 budget and our levy for 2027, we are projecting a $6.9 million levy increase for 2027. And those main drivers are asset management plan of 1.4 million, transportation machinery transferred reserves for electric fleet of 129,000. We have the 452,000 for Rockwood Terrace, but we have staffing requests of 921,000 this year and social services new build is about 70,000. The paramedic service enhancement plan is 431. Affordable housing transfer is 161,700. Housing capital is 235,000 and community transit is 51,100. And overall, our salaries and benefits accounts for about $2.9 million of the levy. So obviously, we don't know what our growth will be for 2027. So I have assumed that based on historical growth we've seen in the last few years that you will will see a $1.4 million. So we're assuming that in 2027 that we could see after growth impact of 6.36%. I'm just, I kind of had a slide out of order here, so I'm just gonna go quick, a couple of slides and then I'll come back. So if I look at the impact on the property owner for the 2026 budget, based on the budget you currently see before you today. If I look at $100,000 in a residential assessment, the increase would be $27.90. And the average detached home in Gray County is assessed at 296,000. So that would make an estimated annual increase of $82.60. Does anyone have any questions on what I've because I'm going to kind of switch into a little bit different topic next?
Okay, let's look around. And if I could just ask the clerks to advise me if there are any hands up on virtually, we'll begin here in the room with Counselor Nielsen.
Thank you very much, Word Metro Stop. Just a quick confirmation, we had a brief discussion with this about the Budget and Finance Committee as well. The 2027 projection for staffing shows where we go. Sorry, I'm trying to scroll back in my slides. The $921,400, just confirming that that was if we didn't increase the staffing this year, if we did increase the staffing this year. There was kind of a discussion about that at the Budget and Finance, so just making sure we're all clear on the table here.
Yes, the levy impact would be slightly. The levy impact is different, but if you added or subtracted those positions, that's the amount of levy that attaches to those positions. So the 921,000 you see versus the 339. If I looked at one that happened, you would know, okay, this year I had this and this year I had that. But if at some point you decided that that position that that that's the total that was never there before, that is now there, so.
Okay, I see a question over here from Counselor Dobrine, and then we'll go to Counselor Ercles after that.
Thank you and good morning. Thank you. One question about court security. Is that directly related to the mandated increased presence of security at the provincial offenses courts? And I know that we were trying to get an answer from the province as to whether or not there'd be funding to help support that. Is that what that amount is, 150,000?
Through you, Madam Warden. Thank you for the question, Counselor Dobrine. So in 2024, we agreed in principle that we would pay court security costs for the city of Owensound that exceed the amount that they receive in provincial funding. And we budgeted $250,000. In a report to Budget and Finance last month, we acknowledged that's about 117,000 overspent and we included 400,000 in this year's budget. And you're correct that the at least part of the increase in costs from our understanding is the added court security, having armed officers in addition to the special constables. And whether there will be any additional funding provided by the province for this in 2026, we don't have that information yet.
Thank you, and we're always like a year behind. Because the funding is based on prior year's costs, I recall.
Through you, Madam Warden. Yes, you're correct. In discussions with finance staff at the city of Owensound, we determined the easiest way to provide the funding was we would fund based on the prior year's expenditures as submitted to the province.
Okay, Counselor, Counselor Ercles.
Thank you, Madam Warden. And through you, Sue, in 2027, it's about 452,000. It's projected increase on the county levy for the Rockwood Terrace 28 beds. What's it costing us now per bid? Is that worth it? Is it is it about the average? If we use the average number of what it costing us now on the county levy per bid? Sorry.
We don't have, I don't have that number right with me, but if you give us a few minutes, I can, we can get you that.
Okay, there's a hand up over from the Deputy CEO.
Good morning. Thank you through you, Madam Warden. Yeah, perhaps we could come back to that in a few minutes. Allow us some time just to pull the numbers together so we can give you an accurate answer on that one. But we can get the number.
No problem with that. I can certainly wait on that, see whether it comes up with the number that I have. One, the other question is on the roads exchange. We got 1.3, 1.4 million in transfer funds that it's going to take. Is that on an asset management, the funds that are in that for the roads that are coming down to the lower tier?
Yeah, I think if I recall back through the the Urban Road Exchange Committee. So it's kind of like 2 million is going to be a 2.4, whatever it is, kind of a combination of increased spending and the equalization payments to the lower tiers. And and a million kind of comes off that as savings for us doing urban maintenance. So that kind of where the 1.3, whatever comes out in the end. That makes sense.
Okay, thank you. I'm just looking around the room. We'll go to Counselor Greg next.
Just want to quickly touch upon that delayed capital project and the increased cost long term. That's only on the hard construction capital costs and doesn't actually include the operational costs of upstaffing, which is ancillary to once you create the base, you have to staff it. So there would be operational costs that get on boarded the moment that gets open. So I would think that number is only responding to just a pure construction cost and not the actual fulsome whole cost of of the asset.
I believe so, but let me double check that and get back to you.
Okay, we'll go to Director MacNab.
This funding is for the Aitken base, which that is for the car that is right now in Hanover that will move to Aitken when Aitken is built. So that the upstaff car started in 2026. So those operating costs are already in the budget as of right now.
Okay, looking around the room, confirming no hands online. So I think we are ready to go again. And you did mention that you're doing things a little bit differently. So if you could just identify the slide that you're going to continue with, that'll allow everybody to adjust their own personal notes. Thank you.
Pardon me, through you, Madam Warden. We're just going to switch back to slide 2024, please. I just wanted to, in these slides are sort of just a high level highlight of our reserves, our discretionary reserves. And and a little bit, we'll talk about obligatory reserves. There is in our online open book, there is a separate, what I call them cards, and it will actually has a little bit more detail on obligatory and our discretionary reserves. And there was an attachment on the agenda package that has more details on our reserves, which breaks these down between the three sort of ins and outs between 25, 26, and 27. But for now, I'm just wanted to highlight sort of where we're sitting for our reserves. So all of these assumptions that you see before you, 2024, a year in balance is based on our audited statements. And anything going forward is based either on budget or the 2025 projected contributions and withdrawals are based on our last report that we sent presented at Budget Finance. So SAP had done a year-end projected column, so these numbers drive off those projections. So these numbers drive off those projections. So we typically split our discretionary reserves sort of into three categories. We have working funds, which is about 1.93 million, that number stays consistent. And then we have some current funds and we have capital purpose reserves. So you can see in 2024, we start with about $65 million in our reserves. And by the end of 2025, we're projecting to be just slightly over that, and then you'll start to see in 2026 where some of our larger capital projects are, are expected to happen, and you'll see a decrease in our capital reserves to, we expect to be at the end of 2026, to have capital reserves of 22.36 million and 19.7 million in our current purpose working reserves. And then on the next slide, sort of takes you then, what happens based on our 2020, 27 projections? And so we start again with a $44 million reserve balances and discretionary, and then we are forecasting by the end of 2027, that will be at 38 million, just a little over 38 million in our reserves. We also have our obligatory reserves, which are statutory reserves. So we have our development charges, which at the end of 2024, audited statements was 25.9 million. We are projecting that balance to be approximately 23.5 million in 2025, and in 2026, 23.8, and then at the end of 2027, to be 21.2. Those assumptions have made assumptions based on the revenues we will collect over development charges, and that can vary from year to year. And our Canada Community Building Fund, formerly known as our gas tax funding, we had $8.9 million in 2024. And by the end of 2027, we, we will be back to 1.351 million. Those, some of those funds have been earmarked for some large, larger capital projects over the next couple of years. And I know throughout the year and our budgets, we typically will fund some stuff through our one-time funding reserve, so I just kind of wanted to highlight, based on our policy, kind of what that, that means and how, and what we do with that. So within our reserve policy in the county, we do have sort of corporate stabilizations reserves that we have set aside for the purpose of either mitigating significant increases in our taxes, one-time emergency and our unbudgeted expenditures, and tax stabilization due to increases or changes in assessment that. So in our policy, we sort of have set target balances for ourselves. We have a minimum balance that we don't want to ever go below of 3% of our corporate levy. We have a maximum balance of 15% of our corporate levy, and we have a target balance of 7% of our, of our corporate levy. And on this slide, I sort of have highlighted, what does that mean in dollars for us? So in, based on our, the budget you see before you, if we were to raise $85.4 million in levy, that would mean that our target balance would be about 5.9 million and our maximum would be about 12.8. And based on our estimated reserves, we are, all of our corporate stabilization accounts, we are estimating that by the end of 2026, they will be $11.4 million, which is getting close to our maximum amount. But in the context of the conversations we'll have later today, I just thought it would be important to have that information. And that's pretty much where I'm going to end off, and I'm going to swap the microphone out for Mary Lou. So if anyone has any other questions for me?
Okay, thank you, let me just ask if there are any questions, thank you very much, you've laid on the table the groundwork and the data that we have to contemplate as we go into decision-making later. So look around the room, any further questions, we'll go to Counselor Greg and then to Counselor Kivany next.
The 3% one-time stabilization reserve, I think, Sue, you mentioned, what motivated the policy, what motivates tethering it to like an inflationary increase all the time? Or is this a, an old policy that exists, much like product labeling that was created in the 50s and now we have smart tags? Like, should it be reevaluated? Because the, the requirement for a one-time funding may not require it to be indexed all the way through.
Thank you for that question, it's actually quite timely, because as I was refreshing, because this policy was made before I started here at the county, I believe, in 2021. And ironically enough, Garrett and I noticed as we were looking at the policy that it is set for 2026 for, to review and update. So that will be on our work plans for next year, would be to update the policy. So I can't really attest to why it was done the way it was, but that's the policy we have. So yes, we will be looking at that in 2026.
Okay, thank you, just before we go to Counselor Kivany's question, we do have the answer ready about Rockwood. I know Director Cornell, or is there somebody else who is going to? Okay, Manager Reed, are you providing that? Let's just get that caught up, and then I'll go to Counselor Kivany, and then I'll keep looking around the room for any other questions.
Because Garrett has the, the details, and so we can get into the details. But through you, Madam Warden, and good morning, everyone. So to answer your question, Counselor Echols, the amount per bed for the, is actually a reduction per bed, even though it's an increase in the overall levy. So we did a budget exercise to make sure that we are projecting actuals of the, the cost for the additional 28 beds, which also comes with some efficiencies by having the layout of the building with the four home areas, 32 residents per home area, we were able to, to see some efficiencies. So if we had just taken the, what is it, it was? So currently, the cost per bed to the levy for enhancements is $28,300 per bed. If we had just taken that and multiplied it by 28, it would have been 793,000, and we are only increasing 452,000 to the levy. So it actually reduces the per bed by about $1,700 per bed.
I just want to give an opportunity for a follow-up for Counselor Echols before we go back over to Counselor Kivany.
So those efficiencies are found in those 28 beds, it will also be found in the new, the new 100 beds, so that's been put into place as well too. So we can look at a reduction. If it hasn't been, the, the reduction would be 1.7?
Right, through, through you, Warden Mattressoffs. So that, those efficiencies are seen kind of on a whole across the, the operating for the new build. So it, a number of, of operating factors were taken into consideration to reflect that reduction. So that's the, the whole reduction per bed for levy on a, on a whole. You want to add, maybe?
Yeah, I think I just want to clarify that, that a big part of the, the reason why we're saying these beds are cost less per bed is because you're now distributing those costs over 128 beds as opposed to 100, so administration and things like that, that don't go up when you add 128 beds. If you simply go $452,000, which is the proposed increase for the Rockwood redevelopment, and divide that by the 28 beds that are being added, it's $16,100 per bed. That's the incremental cost of those beds. But when you look at it as a whole 128, it is pulling the average cost of all of those beds down together.
Okay, thank you very much for that clarification. We'll go over to Counselor Kivany next, and then I'll look for any other hands.
Thank you, Warden Mattressoffs, and good morning, everyone. I'm back on page 24, and I'm just curious, the mostly for the capital portion of the 2026 budgeted withdrawals, is a portion of that Rockwood Terrace related, or is that mostly the other capital projects, the roads and that sort of thing?
So yeah, it is, it's a combination of multiple, if you look at the Reserve Continuity Schedule that's attached in your agenda package, it does, so if you look at this section that says, based on preliminary budget, December 31st, 2026, there is a 2026 budgeted withdrawals column. So if you look down that column, you will see exactly sort of what reserves are affecting that. So let me just see if I can find Rockwoodland, because it's, there's quite a few, and these are actually a little bit summarized for you, because we are combining similar ones together. We use, so the money we had been putting aside for a reserve for the Rockwood Terrace, we used all of that in 2024 for our capital expenditures in 2024.
Okay, thank you, I'll just look around the room here, for any final hands? The Deputy Treasurer, nothing online. Thank you, Deputy Treasurer, that was a very nice introduction in order to give us what we need to be equipped with for the later part of this agenda, so now you get to take a break, and we'll call upon Director Spicer, thank you. While you're getting set up, there is a question? Did I hear a question? No? Okay, thank you, and we'll carry on.
Thank you very much. Get Brittany to advance the slide, please, and thank you. So Sue mentioned earlier in the presentation that after the November 26 Budget and Finance Committee meeting, we were asked a number of questions at that meeting, including about prior year surplus, reserve balances, and if there were opportunities to use one-time funding to offset the levy increase and reduce it from the 6.68. So after that meeting, staff reviewed some strategies that could reduce the levy, and the, the first things we looked at were anything that would not affect operations. And so the, the next few slides discuss these opportunities. The, the first is, we've talked over a number of years that we have three internally financed debentures. And so we, we call them debentures, but basically we've borrowed from our own reserves versus going to infrastructure, Ontario, or a bank. The first one is the Chatsworth Paramedic Services Base. Built into our budget is a levy requirement of $65,400, because we round to even dollars. The other one is for Greg Abel's, it's an annual contribution of 73,200. And the administration building, and that's for the expansion renovation that we undertook in 2018, and that is $706,500. So basically, we borrowed from ourselves, we could pay off these debentures in 2026, and that removes the expense from the budget. So if you, you look at it in one hand, it's like, we've, we've borrowed from ourselves, so I take it out of one pocket, and it goes back to the, the pocket of, you know, here's the, here's the reserve that we've accessed. And if you go to the next slide, so when we looked at that, it creates an overall levy decrease of $845,200, which based on the current budget of 1% increases, $801,200, that's a 1.05 reduction to the residential rate. We would use 4.144 million of one-time funding reserve to pay off that principal amount of the debenture. It brings our one-time funding reserve to our target balance. As I mentioned previously, it reduces the levy without affecting levels of service. There are minimal losses of revenue, and I'll call that a loss of revenue, because when we self-financed these, we charged ourself interest, and it was based on the infrastructure Ontario interest, interest rate at the time we, we did our debentures. So it doesn't have a levy impact, it just means that without that revenue, you're transferring less money to the one-time funding reserve, so it's kind of just going around in circles. And the other thing it does is it increases the room available on our annual repayment limit for borrowing capacity. So even though it was self-financed, what we do is like, it, it still impacts our borrowing capacity, we have to record it. And if we go to the next slide, so what this demonstrates is, if we remove the $845,200 in debt payments and current borrowing rates are at 4.48%, that means that you would have access to borrow 12.5 million dollars more than what you currently would. And I will say that those three internally financed debentures, they all mature in 2030 or 2031, so we would be paying them off early and reducing the levy. I'll go to the next slide. Maybe, what I'll do is I'll pause and see if anybody has any questions on that.
Okay, I will look around the room if there are any questions on that specific item before we look at anything else. Not seeing a hands here, and confirming with the clerks, nobody online, therefore, please proceed.
Thank you. And so, again, we look at that as a win-win, we're reducing the levy, we're not impacting operations, and these have all been built into the budget for a number of years, and we would just be advancing the payment. The next one, I know this is a, a small in comparison, but we wanted to bring it forward. We have some recently finalized forestry tenders that will take place, the work will be done in 2026. And we received $14,100 more than has been budgeted. So we, what we would do is increase the sale of the forestry projects by $14,100, and that decreases the residential rate by 0.02%. Now, it seems like a proverbial drop in the bucket, but it's $14,100. And we'll go to the next slide. And that's another way of show there, well, I think, could we go backwards? Okay, sorry. So this slide demonstrates that between the two things, we could reduce the levy by $859,300, which is a 1.07% decrease. And in 2027, that $845,200 also would not be in the levy. So what you've seen in the projected column for 2027, that would reduce it by almost a percent. And so I'm just going to say that when we started this morning with our presentation, we were at 6.68%. If you agree with those two recommendations, that reduces the residential rate to 5.61%. And then the next piece is, we would go into closed session to discuss another option.
Okay, so before we go into that, so thank you very much, we very much appreciate staff looking deeply into, I don't want to use the word creative, because it, it's intentional, it's, it's not making something up, but by looking, you know, dutifully looking at reasonable ways in which we can manage our own finances, and it's a very interesting scenario you presented with the internal shift that way. So thank you for presenting that, it's always welcome news to see opportunities in which we can, we can decrease what the, the end levy will be. But I imagine there may be some questions that are revolved around that, because that's something we haven't entertained before. So I will just put the question out before we get a brief introduction from, from the Deputy, Deputy CEO before we go into closed session. So are there any further questions then for Director Spicer or the Deputy Treasurer? Not seeing any hands up here in the room, nor online. So thank you, I think we're all maybe in a bit of shock on that one, so let's, let's listen intently and move further into the rest of the agenda, thank you very much, Director Spicer. Okay, so with that then, Deputy Okay, so with that then, Deputy CEO, note, you don't have an introduction, you'll wait until we go into closed, so Madam Clerk, it is recommended that the committee, the whole, does now go into closed section, session pursuant to Section 239 to D of the Municipal Act 2001, as amended to discuss labor relations or employee negotiations with regards to union negotiations. And this, of course, is with the lens of our budget, so with that, I will ask for a mover in a second. Moved by Counselor Echols, seconded by Counselor Mackey. It's on the floor for discussion to go into closed. Seeing no hands raised, all those in favor? And we have on favor online as well. Okay, that motion is carried. Thank you. So we'll need a moment to clear the room and to change-